Thank you, Mr. Chu. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing here today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for the commission's reporter. And if you're here to testify on any matter on the agenda, please come forward, be sworn in by Mr. Picaro, introduce yourself and spell your name, all sorts. With that being said, let's move into the public hearing. Calling agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-16392 from ENJ Venue. Mr. Chu, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair and the members of the commission. David Self, counsel for the applicant, ENJ Benjor Corp. To my right is the principal of the applicant, Chong Gai Lee.
Thank you very much. Mr. Picaro.
Mr. Chu, I believe you have the letter from Mr. Self moving to withdraw this application.
Point of order, can I go through the routine if there's anybody here to testify?
Yeah, I think--
In the public hearing?
I would think the administrator should also put on the record first that the summary was given to the commissioner so that it would cover for--
Yeah, so we have everything in the record. Very good.
We'll state for the record that a summary of the August 15, 2019 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Gana Monta prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing non-commissioners, the licensee has requested to withdraw this application, correct?
That's correct. Due to the lapse of the lease but on the line premises.
Okay, very good. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to withdraw application number 19-16392.
Second?
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-16392 is approved. The withdrawal is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Calling agenda item number two, application number 19-15324 from Volume Services Inc., DVA Center Plate.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Mr. Picaro, Robert Ichikawa representing Volume Services LLC doing business at Center Plate.
Thank you. Picaro?
And we have received no questions. And to your right is-- Oh, I'm sorry. To my right, sorry. To my right, Dave Moriawa, General Manager.
We'll state for the record that a summary of the August 29, 19 preliminary hearing, 2019 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. The applicant has met statutory requirements for submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioner?
Mr. Ichikawa, we just received this today. So why don't you walk us through your event?
Okay, so the supplemental business plan was to address some of the questions that the commissioners have at the preliminary hearing. Basically, the reason for the upgrade is that it would allow the licensee to provide a higher level of service and experience for those who will come to the events at the stadium. The factors that are being considered when to serve the spirits will be based on the types of events that they have and whether or not the licensee can control the premises the way they want to. And I'll let Davey explain that a little bit more detail. And then there's going to be only limited locations as far as serving the spirits. Now I'll let Davey explain that as well. There's two areas, one's the Bar Gardens, which is a specific area that's will be enclosed. That's the only area that they're going to serve spirits. People coming in will be ID'd and banned. Those who are leaving would have to give back all the liquids or drinks, whatever they have, even if it's bottled water. They'll give that back and then we'll cut off the bans. And so if they want to re-enter the Bar Garden, they'll be ID'd again and re-banned again.
And this will be just for serving, just for spirits?
Spirits. Just for spirits?
And are you folks going to have any locations or bars within the licensed premises that are going to be serving all three spirits, beer and wine?
No.
So it'll be beer, so beer and wine--
That stays the same as they have been doing.
Okay. But spirits would just be standalone spirits and there would be a controlled area for those two? You mentioned that there are going to be two areas?
Correct.
Multiple areas, depending, but it would be separated.
I'm sorry, yeah, two concepts, multiple areas.
Okay.
And so one would be Bar Gardens, the other would be the catering areas. And I'll let Davey explain that a little bit more as well.
Okay. So what have--
And then, yeah, the training will be the same thorough training that they have for all the employees that they currently conduct for their current services. So maybe, Davey, you can explain a little bit about the different type of events and the areas.
Sure. So to address some of the questions that was there last time, yes, the spirits will be served in a different area. It will not be the same as the beer and wine that we're currently serving. So it'll be separated. The different types of events that were taken into consideration have been the events that we had before. And we're looking at control to see if we're going to actually serve drinks. The example we used last time was like the NFL. We didn't feel we had enough control, so we didn't serve it for the NFL. Obviously, that was a little less worrisome than a concert, so that's kind of the scrutiny that we're putting under. I think it was asked, who is making the decision? Center Plate would be making the decision, not the promoter or the stadium. Let's see. Next, Bar Gardens. Okay. For the Bar Gardens, it is a separate area to kind of explain what it is. It is, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the stadium, but what one of the plans, for example, would be is if we do sell mixed drinks or bar things in a concert setting, we would serve it inside the spiral. And to get that, you have to stay within the spiral. So you actually can't even watch a concert. You'd have to stay in there if you want to go into there. It would ask you to leave your drinks, you take it away, and then you can go enjoy the concert. So it's a separate area, so it's a lot more controlled for us. If we can't get the spiral, we may create a Bar Garden. It's different from a Beer Garden, obviously. It's just four mixed drinks, that's the area.
Do you anticipate serving hard liquor during University of Hawaii games?
That is a possibility, definitely. We are looking at the caterings because we have a lot of requests for that. And that's the main reason why we're asking for this license for out in the public. If we do, it would be going through that scrutiny, too, if we have to separate it. We definitely wouldn't be serving it with regular beer and wine, it would be a separate area.
Okay, and these areas are, are these going to be set areas or are they going to vary depending on the event?
It will vary depending on the event because sometimes, for example, the spirals, if somebody wants it for catering, we have to move out and we may not be able to use it. And so either we'll just close it or if we can find a place that is secured, then we'll do it that way.
Okay, but in no case will people be allowed to take their mixed drink to their seat?
In this scenario, no, depending on the type of event that is up for debate. If it is a high--
My concern is the student section during UH games.
Yes, so that would be considered a high risk. We've got a lot of violations for that. So for UH game, that'll be a risk where we've just put it in one area and you have to drink it there and then you have to leave without it.
Okay.
What's the purpose of these diagrams attached to the supplementary flight? I don't see any reference to it. Again, we just got this.
Oh, these are just the updated floor plans that we provided.
Do any of these depict either the Bar Garden or the catering area or just the licensed premises?
No, yes.
Okay.
So anything not delineated in red would not be included in the proposed licensed premises?
It's correct.
So I'm looking at the exhibits and I guess because the whole area is licensed, let's take me through exhibit, what is this, AL12? In this situation, like in this certain drawing, where would, let me back up, the spiral that you're referring to, where is it at on this map?
It's not in any of these individual maps. These are the areas that needed to be, I guess, redrawn because the stadium changed some of their walls and stuff like that, so this was being redrawn and resubmitted. The general license is still the original license that we submitted a long time ago.
I'm trying to just get an idea of where these location of, where the serving of the spirits would be within the stadium itself, so--
Yeah, so on these diagrams, that wasn't the intent of these floor plans. It was to update the existing structure and floor plans.
It's not referenced in here, but the spirals, basically, there's two located in the South Plaza and two located in the North Plaza. Those are the spirals that we're talking about. If we were to make a separate beer Bar Garden, the other places that we would be considering is the service roads, which are, if you guys go there, it's kind of on the outside, yeah.
The areas that they select will be contained and kind of controlled areas so that it's not in the main flow of where all the concessions are.
Okay, so no matter where the patron would be seated, they would still be able to access that area and then still, I mean, get to their side of the seat wherever they are located within the stadium then?
Basically, they have to work for their alcoholics.
They gotta, yeah, that's basically what, I mean, if I gotta walk all the way down there, it's not worth it, right? Basically, just--
Yes.
--the beer instead, right?
How far in advance before an event that you know the actual locations of those Bar Gardens or--
We start planning as soon as tickets are sold.
Okay.
That's kind of the basis because prior to that, we don't actually know if it's actually going to happen or not.
So is there a possibility that at the last minute, some of these areas may change?
It may close, yes.
Or closed, but not, not say moved from?
The set locations are pretty much predetermined where we could open.
Okay.
If anything, it'll close down, yeah.
Okay.
What's your pleasure, Commissioner?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second?
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We're now in the executive session. Okay, thank you. We are now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant?
No, Chair, but we have an action. Yeah. Motion to approve application number 19-15324 with the following conditions. Licensee is to provide 30 days' notice of location and consumption areas of any event of 5,000 or more attendees. Second condition will be that a post-event report will be due to the commission no later than 30 days after the event. Post-event report to include the number of attendees, number of attendees, number of attendants banded, as well as how much liquor was sold in these designated areas. Third condition is that this application will be subject to a six-month probationary period.
Second, the motion--
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number 19-15324 is approved with conditions in the motion.
Any clarification on that?
No. It's clear. When you ask how much alcohol, is that units or is that sales?
Sales.
Sales, thank you.
You did include the 30 days, right?
Yeah, so let us know 30 days before an event, inform the commission of where the consumption areas are going to be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Calling agenda item number three, application number 19-16492 from Stonefish Grill Inc. Ms. Melchior.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairs and Commissioners. Robert Melchior, on behalf of the applicant, Stonefish Grill Inc. And to my right is Gary Jacopus, J-A-C-O-P-U-S, the president of the corporation. We have reviewed the report and there are no amendments or changes, but I would just like to add that I did bring photos of the outside dining areas for the commission.
Thank you. You folks have been on a ten, yeah?
Yes, but unfortunately, they haven't been open yet. They hope to open this Saturday.
Great, great. Okay, Mr. Picaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We'll state for the record that a summary of the August 29, 2019 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
You folks think Saturday, grand opening? Hopefully?
Hopefully.
Just clarification. The, is this picture right here, this is an entrance that's a stairs coming down to, is that the entrance to the back area or is that going to be sealed off?
It's, no, it's an entrance. It's right off, like four foot beyond that retaining wall is the sidewalk, a main thoroughfare, so you get a lot of foot traffic there.
So the patrons will be able to come--
That's always been an entrance for the last 40 years for previous establishments.
So you'll be making sure that they don't leave past that--
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and we'll have a hostess stand right there.
Oh, good.
I have one question. On your investigative report, it says you'll be closing at 11:00 daily, but you will have, will possibly have some special events with the 2:00 closing.
Right, I mean, you just stated that, but the likelihood of that is very minimal.
Yeah, if we do, it's not going to be very often, so.
Okay. Motion to approve application number 19-16492.
Second?
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number 19-16492 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, application number 19-16499 from Kakako Wine LLC. Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Terry Louie for the applicant. To my right is Alex Granger, who is one of the principals of the applicant. No changes to the investigative report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Picaro?
Item number four, no. State for the record that a summary of the August 29, 2019 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, do you have any questions of the licensee?
This is not in Kakako, is it?
Nope.
Kakako is, Kakako is where we intend on targeting our customers. We're not based in Kakao.
Okay. And this is for delivery, correct?
Correct, online wine shop.
Right. So you said that Kakako will be the target area, but are you, you're not asking to be limited to that area, correct?
Correct.
So essentially, if this license is approved, then you'll be able to deliver island-wide, right?
Correct. Not our initial intent, but it is a possibility.
So complimentary delivery to 96744?
If you meet the minimum purchases--
One case of Leonetti, please.
So, Mr. Granger, Granger, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I visited your website. It's expensive. The cheapest thing was $39.99, which is right up my alley, but I had one concern, only because this is a new concept and potentially, we're going to start to see more of these or we could possibly see more of these. When I was checking out, I know that it asks for a date of birth and my date of birth that I plugged in was January 1st, 2012.
It hasn't been published. The website's still under construction with that regard. So the plan is there will be two, there'll be three steps for age. So when you're going to click kakakowine.com, a pop-up box will come right away before you can even enter the website. That will ask you to confirm your 21. At checkout, which you were, but it's not, because the website's not live, it will ask you again for your date of birth. And then upon delivery, we will do exactly what the FedExes and UPS do right now when they deliver wine, is photo ID and signature for a 21. So there will be three steps, two on the website, one at delivery, asking for confirmation for 21 years and above.
Very good. So if she does, if, when it is live, if she does punch in a birth date of 2012, which would show she's seven years old, would she still be able to continue on to a sale?
So one of two things is going to happen. If, depending on the web developer, it'll either block you right away. But second of all, so when you, just to tell you how it actually works, when you put in an order, you'll put in your order, your date of birth, your credit card, and then it'll say your order has been pushed through. But before you actually charge your credit card, at my end, I have to accept it. So when I see the date of birth being 2012, obviously, it'll be denied.
Okay, but that has to happen manually, that won't happen--
All orders--
--that will be built into the system.
I will try to build into the site. I, the limitations of the built-in to the site has to do with the web platform that we're using, so if I can, I will.
I have an 11-year-old niece who's very good at computers, so, you know, this kind of stuff is worrisome when it's going to, potentially, if you're successful island-wide and it might get to the point where you're getting, the demand is so high, you having to accept everyone manually could lead to some problems.
We have to, we have to accept everyone manually, just from an inventory perspective. I need to make sure that what you're ordering, I have, I have in stock. So the manual acceptance is, we have to go through that. So that's for sure going to happen. At the same token, I'm hoping there's no 11-year-olds that go on my website. That's not our target market. By the time they reach that, they will have already had to lie to the website because upon logging into the website, they'll be asked to confirm that they're 21 years or older. As I mentioned last time, we're also, as you saw, $39.99 was the lowest-priced bottle. We're not selling one cans of beer, $2 chardonnays. Our target market is higher-end. Our target market, as I said, is Kakako, it's Ward Village, it's that community of high-end apartment buildings that would order that type of wine. So I hear your concern, I share your concern, and we're going to mitigate it with those three stops.
Okay, so the third one will be ask the customer--
Physical at the door. So upon delivery, the person that purchased it will have to show their ID, it's going to have to match the invoice that they put online, it's going to have to prove that they're 21 and older, and then they're going to have to also sign a piece of paper at delivery confirming all of that.
Will they be able to use someone else's credit card?
The, so what we plan to do is mimic what FedEx and UPS do right now when they deliver wine that's bought from out of state. A person over 21 has to sign for it. It doesn't necessarily have to be the person that purchased online. We're happy to go with that guideline, we're comfortable with that. If you have any issues with that and require that it is the person that made the purchase that has to sign for it, we can also abide to that. But we think that following the guidelines that FedEx and UPS are using, which they've been delivering wine in state for decades now, we believe that if it's a guideline that's been accepted, that we would follow the same guideline.
And what about, because you said your target area is going to be Kakao. There's a lot of luxury condominiums there and a lot of those places accept deliveries in the lobby, so the front desk or whoever, the concierge can accept it for--
They're not--
--the tenants. Are you going to be able to do that?
For alcohol, they're not supposed to. It's supposed to be signed by the person receiving it. So at those condos, the owner or resident--
They'll have to come down.
--will have to come down or let us upstairs to go to their door.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I chickened out after the credit card part. I just exited.
We would have gladly taken your money.
Yeah, it's a little expensive for my taking. It's a very good wine selection.
That would have been a good thing.
I did that at 9:00 AM, noting that. That's the farthest I come.
And you said your hours, right, your hours are going to be set at 9:00 AM to close on weekends?
Yeah, so our hour, those are the hours of the office where the sales agent who's taking the orders from online is going to be sitting. Obviously, you'll be able to put in an order on the website 24 hours a day. It's just if you go at 11:59 PM online and try to buy a bottle of beer and ask me to deliver it, then there's nobody in the office to take your order, so it'll go to the next day.
So it'll be delivered 9:00 AM the next morning?
No, so the, our plan is to take the orders between 9:00 and 5:00 and deliver them from 5:00 to 7:00 or 8:00 afterwards. So the same person that takes the orders will be doing the delivery. So the delivery will happen in the late afternoon or early evening.
Okay, so I'd like to know, though, when, you know, or basically have a window of time of when you will not be delivering. I understand this is 9 to 5 for your accepting orders or processing orders, but I want to know when the alcohol is going to actually be delivered.
Well, we were going to follow the law, which now states that you can't sell after 11:59 PM in a retail--
But that's the later--
--accesses, so I would not deliver it anytime after that.
Okay.
I hope to be in bed by then and have everything delivered where you headed out, but that, we'll abide by that timetable.
Okay, so, and what is the earliest you think you would be delivering?
9:00 AM.
Mr. Granger, I understand that the delivery persons will be employees of your company?
Initially, it will be us, the managers. There's two of us manager members as part of this company, myself and my partner, and we'll be doing, we both live in Kakako, so it's literally a concept of, we have our office and our storage that's in Mapuna Puna, finish at 5:00, put whatever wines have been purchased during that day in the back of the car, deliver them to the Kakako region ourselves as we go home. That's the concept out of the block. Now, as we said, we're not limiting ourselves. If somebody on the North Shore, for example, wishes to buy, nothing limits us from accepting it. I personally probably won't accept an order for a $25 bottle of wine to go deliver it to the North Shore. That's going to be a business decision. As we grow over time, I intend on hiring-- Initially, it will be us, the managers. There's two of us manager members as part of this company, myself and my partner, and we'll be doing, we, we both live in Kakaako, so it's literally a concept of, we have our office and our storage that's in Mapuna Puna. Finish at five, put whatever wines have been purchased during that day in the back of the car, deliver them to the Kakaako region ourselves as we go home. That's the concept out of the block. Now, as we said, we're not limiting ourselves. If somebody on the North Shore, for example, wishes to buy, nothing limits us from accepting it. I personally probably won't accept an order for a twenty-five-dollar bottle of wine to go deliver it to the North Shore. That's gonna be a business decision. As we grow over time, I intend on hiring employees and delivery people to deliver the wine, assuming that we grow beyond the Kakaako region, or beyond volume that I can handle myself.
Is it your intent that, if then, hopefully, when you grow, all the delivery people will be employees of the company?
Correct.
And, and, I know we're not there yet, but how would you ensure that they, make sure that there's compliance with these limits and so forth?
Well, they, we, we would train them to do exactly what we're doing ourselves, and I would send them, obviously, take the course here on, on IDing and recognizing underage drinkers and, and and people that are drunk. So I intend on taking the course, so is my partner, and we would, we would expect the same of our employees down the road.
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four nine nine.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote our agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one six four nine nine is approved.
Thank you, Chairman.
Calling agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one six six seven two from Poloshiko LLC. DBA Papos Tapos Cantino.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Commissioner. To my right is the member manager, Elizabeth Diaz. She is president of Council Wayne Lou. We have no changes to the investigator's report.
Thank you. Mr. Macarol.
Say for the record that a summary of the August fifth, two thousand nineteen preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. The applicant has met statutory requirements for this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six six seven two.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote our agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one six six seven two is approved. Moving into the license applications, special license applications, agenda item number six, application number two zero dash two zero five four zero dash one through two zero dash two zero five four zero dash thirty, from Hawaii H I S Corporation, DBA Waikiki Club Lounge.
Good afternoon, I'm Chicago Elgin for Hawaii H I S, DBA Waikiki Club Lounge.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two zero dash two zero five four zero dash one to two zero dash two zero five four zero dash three zero.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote our agenda item number six, application number two zero dash two zero five four zero dash one through two zero dash two zero five four zero dash thirty is approved for the dates specified in the request, or in the application. Thank you, ma'am. Moving into agenda item number seven, application number two zero dash two zero seven two five from American Renaissance Academy.
Good afternoon. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Damon Hudson, Chairman of the American Renaissance Academy. I'm here to ask for a one-day special liquor license for our nonprofit.
Commissioners?
Mr. Hudson, why don't you walk us through what type of event this is gonna be?
Sure. We're gonna have a concert with our partners, BAMP Productions, at our event center on campus. We're gonna be selling, if we get approved, alcohol in a designated area off the, the main concert venue. That area will be secured with, with fencing and have a ten-foot border area. I sent over a security plan to detail the, the areas where security officers will be present. We will be banding and checking all of the patrons that are twenty-one and over. We have maximum security. We got our trained personnel to be able to make sure that all of them are twenty-one that get into that area. Any alcohol that is consumed in the twenty-one and over area will be left there. Nothing will be able to come out into the concert venue area.
You had another event at the same location, correct?
Yes.
And is this the same beer garden that you're using?
That is correct.
So it's the same square footage, everything, same layout, everything?
Exactly the same, correct.
Did you have any incidents at your last?
No, we did not.
Did you, um, did you apply for any special duty, HPD, special duty?
Uh, yes, we did.
Did you get an approval or?
I have not heard back yet, but I have positive that, that we'll have at least two, is what I'm being told.
Two, and that's being, that ratio was done by special duty or what you requested?
What we requested.
At your last event, did you have HPD?
No.
No.
You're anticipating five thousand in attendance?
Yes. At the last event, we had sixty-one hundred and eighteen, I think, total.
And what percentage of the proceeds, or how much of the proceeds will be going to the nonprofit?
Um, we received, um, eight, sixty-five-plus-thousand from the last event. And that came out to be about, um, total for what they brought in, about forty percent of the total proceeds of the entire event.
And that, that event was also in partnership with that project?
That is correct.
And, um, is this gonna be an all-ages event? What, or is it gonna be eighteen and over?
It, it's, I believe, an eighteen-and-over event, yes.
So none of the students will be present there at the-
No.
At the concert?
No, they won't be inside the venue space.
I have one question.
Yes.
Have you requested emergency medical?
Yes.
You have?
Yeah, and we, we, we do. We have at least one ambulance. Usually, depending on the, how busy they are, we get between one and two. Sometimes one has to leave, just because of the, the volume that goes on.
Thank you. What is your plan if you, you know, one of your security staff sees someone who is consuming alcohol outside of the busy venue?
But at that point, they would be removed from the venue space, and their, their pass would be taken. They would be pulled away.
Even if that person's banded?
Yes.
So, Mr. Hudson, um, there's been, there's been a growing concern for the public as far as this age demographic that we're targeting. There's been a lot of shootings, a lot of, um, things happening in different communities, specifically with this type of age group. And I'm sure you know this, is that you will be getting that age group, that the majority of them will be in Kapole. In your opinion, this type of venue that's happening is not a traditional type of concert that we have an entertainer or a live person singing. This is, in your opinion, what type of venue do you go to?
Well, we, we do have, um, there are acts that will have live singing going on, so you'll have both. We, we do incorporate that into the, into the show. I know your concern with regard to that. I had one of my, my family friends that's in HPD work the last event. And his comment that came back was that they, that they were actually more well-behaved than some of the local music concerts that we have, where there's more violent brawls. We didn't have any fights when the concert was over and they were going back to their vehicles. He was very surprised how civil the, that population was. I personally helped volunteer and worked that, the exit with the parking, everybody moving out of the venue space. And, you know, I know the youth can get a little crazy, but I was actually, you know, very surprised at how orderly it was moving out. And I think having the proper locations of staff and security in the places while you're moving them in and moving them out gives a presence of that there's not gonna be any of that kind of behavior tolerated. And, and if you wanna ruin your night and be arrested, you can go that route, but we would much rather you get home safely and have a good evening.
Since you mentioned parking and getting home safely, are, are attendees gonna be allowed to park overnight if they need to?
Uh, well, I guess they could if, if they were inebriated and they needed to, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, is that we don't want drunk drivers out on the road.
Yeah, exactly. I, i- if there was that type of situation that we run into, I mean, there's no, no parking. Our, our parking areas, you can, you can park overnight. We, with, with BAMP, encourage Lyft and Uber, and we have set up spots for those to be brought in. So we have designated locations for them to take to and from the venue space. And we encourage, you know, the party buses and those types. We have areas for them to park and wait as well.
Well, I would encourage you that, because they're all, there's always people that would rather drive to-
Yeah.
And if they do choose to make the right choice and are too inebriated to drive home, we would like to see that they can-
Sure.
-park overnight for free and come get their vehicle the next day.
Sure.
And then also, along the same lines as Commissioner Donabon was talking about, this type of entertainment and this demographic, there tends to be illicit drugs. How do, how do you intend to handle that? Because you are responsible if you do receive this license because, for, for that type of activity.
Yeah, and I spoke with, with BAMP extensively on that subject, and a hundred percent bag check. They're, they're very diligent in making sure they go through all of the, the, any kind of paraphernalia that's coming into the venue space. They don't allow masks. They don't allow any, any type of banners, flags. I mean, they're searching through everything coming through. And that's something that in the, the previous, um, partners that we had did not do. And, and, you know, it was greatly appreciated seeing how professional they operated and, and made sure that that kind of stuff wasn't happening.
And the security is provided by whom?
Maxim.
Okay, and they've been trained to recognize, because sometimes illegal substances come in on a person rather than in a bag. So have they been trained to recognize when someone's under the influence?
Yes, that, that's what I have been told, and that's what I saw on the first, on the, the last event that we did have. And they would remove anyone that they saw that would be doing anything that was illegal on premises. And I watched that occur as well.
We don't wanna see anyone get, went to the hospital.
Correct.
And I will remind you that it's strict liability, so if something does occur, you folks will be responsible.
Yes.
What kind of liquor are you planning to serve?
Um, they'll have beer, wine, and spirits.
Okay, and your spirits, what kind of spirits?
Um, I believe that they, they are getting, um-
Like pre-mixed spirits?
Yeah, I believe it's pre-mixed spirits with, um, with vodka and rum in the primaries.
And your servers are the same servers you used the last event?
Yeah.
How many servers do you have?
Um, that, I don't have the answer off the top of my head. I'd have to go back to BAMP in camp to get that exact number. But I believe that they have a sufficient amount to be able to service the, the total bar.
So, as you heard previously on the previous agenda, we have large venues that happen at the Aloha Stadium. Large venues happening at other locations as well, including some, it, it can be at the Waikiki Shell. And even in a contained matter that way, there's loopholes and problems with containing within existing structure, even with, you know, built-in restrooms, everything, and zones, and everything like that. I know that this type of venue that, that BAMP has done before is normally at a controlled setting type of, um, environment. What, what and why, I mean, why this location, or why are they choosing to take it to Kapole? And what is the, like, is their business not sold?
Right, the, the, the area that, um, that we have is unique because we have a tremendous amount of parking. And it's, to get patrons in and out, we have a, a, a good flow, so you can bring, bring them in and bring them out in a quick manner. There, because we're located next to an airport, noise is, is not a factor. So we don't have the noise issue in the neighborhood and that, that type of, of complaints that would come from that. And with it, we have a, uh, an eight-foot fence that's already put around the perimeter. So securing the area is actually, is very easy, because you have roads that are buffers, and to patrol them and to keep the, the, the area secure and safe is, 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 is well-established. With those things, that's why they tend to want to come. We, we do get a tremendous amount of requests from a lot of different promoters wanting to partner with us. And we have denied them over the last six months since our last event. Because we feel that because of the partnerships that we've made with quality promoters is, is really the avenue we wanna go. Because with regards to the educational side of this, we, building the sets, working the sound, working the, the lights, the video, the students get to do that. They get access to, to all of that, building them up and then breaking them down. So having that type of experience and that, and that part of the curriculum inside the entertainment is something that they can't get anywhere else. So we wanna be with the most professional firm that, that we feel. So obviously, we've made some choices in the past that did not allow for that, but we feel that with BAMP, that that's, that, that's a, that's a group that we can partner, and it can fit with our educational component.
You folks plan on doing this, thank you, for?
Yeah, we, we, we do, we not just do it with the concert venues, but we also do it with the movies and television industry. We partnered with Netflix, with CBS, with ABC, with Paramount. We've done a number. They use the event center for Basecamp. They use our aquatics facility for water scenes. And we found that the same workers, the same union workers that build the concert venues are the same guys that are building the movie sets and the television sets. So our students are also being involved inside those arenas as well. And it's an industry that, that the city and county of Honolulu really wants to develop in the entertainment side of it. And when we do build this into what we wanna see in the future for the state of Hawaii, we're gonna need the workforce to be able to implement into that, into that arena, because they did, they did about four-hundred-and-seventy-seven million last year, and they wanna bring it into a billion dollars.
Well, I was thinking just the concerts. Is there any nexus to education, as far as you know?
Any what?
Nexus or relationship to your mission to provide-
Oh, absolutely, in the performing arts. We have a tremendous amount of performance. What's that?
The concerts only.
Yeah, in the concerts.
But the kids aren't attending, you said?
Uh, we actually have had kids perform. We actually have an alumni coming back from Chapman to perform at this event. Yeah, so we do have that, that's taking music over in Orange County, so.
How long have you folks been operating in education there?
Uh, thirteen years.
Is enrollment up or down?
It's up, and it's growing with, with this, with this type of concept. And we just went through our WASC accreditation this year in, in the spring, and we got the full seven-year accreditation.
So, Mr. Hudson, we've been through battle back and forth with this, you know how it goes, and you know our history with this. The only things that I tell these nonprofits or that we express is a violation or an occurrence is not worth jeopardizing your nonprofit status or putting your license on the line. I can see why now you are, because it's a profitable, it's a profitable return for you. In other instances, we've seen it where it's not even worth it. One violation will wipe out their entire profits, basically. The goal is to have a safe environment, um, to continue to have these type of events and continue. If, if you plan on continuing to have these type of events, um, making it better, making, um, changes as need be. But just very, it's a very sensitive, sensitive issue for, um, especi- especially, I mean, me speaking on this, because we went back and forth with this, and we, we know the history with, with this type of venue, so to speak. So that stigma is still there, and it hangs. So that, I mean, that's just commentary, what I'm seeing, and that's what I'm expressing is, you know, over the years, we've seen some, you know, some productions put together- over the years, we've seen some, you know, some productions put together. We've seen good and we've seen bad as well, so.
I just have one comment, Mr. Hudson. So moving forward, I think it would benefit you if you had a representative from the promoter. There were certain questions that you couldn't answer. But we would like to see a promoter representative so that we could clarify. I think it would be a good thing.
They called me today and asked if I wanted them to come. And I said it was, you know, I would welcome you, but, you know, the license is under the school. So I can understand if you can't make, but I'll definitely make that recommendation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We would like to see the people that are promoting the event.
Yeah.
And my, and my comment as well is that we would like more time to review these types of applications. I know that booking these types of entertainers, you folks have to book them much further in advance. And we would like it to be you to come in for an application much further in advance. Because then if there is something wrong or something we'd like to see changed, you can have that time to adjust the application. This event is happening next week, next weekend, you know, so that doesn't give us much time to allow the event to go forward, but also to make any changes if we would like to see any changes made.
Okay, there you go, Mr. Hudson. Okay, motion to approve the application number two zero dash two zero seven two five.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye with reservations, Jim.
Very good.
Could you make a note of that for the recognition?
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number two zero dash two zero seven two five is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one six six two one from Tree Toon, USA. Mr. Lee, how are you?
Uh, I hope we were able to provide a little bit more information as to where and how we intend to keep the liquor secure. If we had a chance to. Last time was no more than just a diagram of the container.
Yes. And we believe the commission did request clarification.
So thank you for these photos.
Yeah. Photo is worth a thousand.
I should make my presence official. Sorry about that. James Lee representing the Triton USA Inc., DBA Triton USA Inc. Mr. Kim Keizy, unfortunately, he's on an out-of-state business trip, so he couldn't be here. But he will be sure to attend the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So basically, it's the container will be housed in a big warehouse and it will be a container for safe, air-conditioned container where we intend to keep all the liquors secure with a padlock. So initially, when you go into the warehouse, you have to go through the checkpoint. There's people there watching the door. So people who have no business in the warehouse cannot come in at all to begin with. And once you go through the warehouse entrance door, nobody else has access to the container other than the licensee who has a key to the padlock. So nobody can open it.
Mr. Lee, how many other tenants use this warehouse space?
I don't know because as you can see, it's just rows and rows of our pallets, so.
I do see that, that's why I'm asking. Because if other people have access to this area, I understand there'd be a padlock, but people know how to use bolt cutters. So we'd like to know how many other tenants are going to have access to the area in which this container is located.
I think the fluctuation is depending on the who keeps their pallets there.
You know even a estimate of a number of other people that keep their goods at this warehouse location?
Uh, no, I don't. I can certainly find out that information and submit it to the commission.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Lee, so I take it from your representation, the warehouse is not open to the general public?
No.
Is it available twenty-four seven for tenants as far as you know?
Uh, no.
What are the hours of the warehouse?
I think it's nine to four.
Nine to four. And is there security after hours as far as you know?
Uh, it's lockdown.
The entire warehouse is locked down?
Yes, yeah.
Do you know if there are cameras inside the warehouse?
Yes, there are CCTVs inside. And also, as you go in through the entrance to your immediate right, there's an office there. So on the opposite side of the office, there's a guard tending the door during the business.
Do you know if there's ever any break-ins in the warehouse?
Well, I didn't ask, so I have no answer to your question.
You said nine to four, is that seven days a week?
Yes, I believe so unless they close on Saturdays and Sundays. But I saw the sign clearly nine to four. This time, I went out there with my consultant that I relied on and he ended up submitting just the diagram of the container. So this time, I made sure that I went out there with him.
So Mr. Lee, moving forward to the public hearing, expect to have some answers for the commission's questions.
Okay, I'll find out the.
We want to know everything.
Yes, sir. I'll find out how many tenants are there and if there were any incidents.
Who has access? Because I'm looking at this picture of this pallet mover, huh? You know how easy it would be to snap that padlock? You wouldn't need bolt cutters. And that's all a concern. With that being said, commissioners, another cycle of action.
So Mr. Lee, based on the investigative report, you want to revise the hours. The investigative report is Monday through Friday from ten AM to four PM. You want to revise it to nine? Is that what you're representing?
We're still okay with ten to four.
Okay, so we'll keep it. All right. Okay, motion to approve the application number one nine dash one six six two one.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one six six two one is approved. Thank you. Mr. Lee, calling agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six nine seven one from Shiro Kya Holdings, Inc. Mr. Keuchi.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keith Keuchi for the applicant. To my right is Eddie Wakida, W A K I D A. He's the vice president of the applicant. We have no changes or corrections.
Mr. Keuchi, Chair, there is still a potential conflict from the president's side, so I will refuse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, continue, Mr. Keuchi.
We have no changes or corrections to the investigative report.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one six nine seven one.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six nine seven one is approved. Thank you.
We have the next, we have the next one too.
Oh, you have the next one too? Oh, surely, surely you do. Calling agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one six nine seven three from Shiro Kya Holdings, Inc.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keith Keuchi for the applicant. By right is Eddie Wakida. He's the vice president of the applicant. We have no changes or corrections to the investigative report. As the investigative report indicates, this is a retail license, but the stock is kept separately. The register and POS system are separate.
Thank you. For the record, can we note that Commissioner Miyashiro has refused subside?
Mr. Keuchi, on page three of the report states that there is an existing license. So you understand that it will be required to be surrendered prior to the issuance of this license?
Yes, we understand that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one six nine seven three.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one six nine seven three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Can we have Commissioner Miyashiro back, please? Calling agenda item number eleven, application number two zero dash two zero six two one from Core Hawaii F and B, LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair O'Donnell, members of the commission, Administrator Picaro. Newton Chu on behalf of applicant. And to my right is Jernelle Mandovka. And I previously provided the spelling to the secretary. She's the general manager. This is the Holiday Inn Express.
Thank you.
A little, a little tiny retail. Little spot there.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number two zero dash two zero six two one.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number two zero dash two zero six two one is approved. Good luck, Ms. Fendosan. Calling agenda item number twelve, transfer application. Calling agenda item number twelve, application number two zero dash two zero six eight nine from Ry three Inc., DBA Roy's Y K T Restaurants. Mr. Lee?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Terry Lee on behalf of the applicant. I refuse the investigative report and I will obviously need to provide the commission hopefully not too lengthy explanation for what occurred here. And let me start by saying that, you know, the old adage that the attorney who represents himself has a fool for a client.
That is correct. That is correct. You will pay for that at a later time, Mr. Lee.
I've heard a different word than fool, by the way.
That's a thing in I C.
So Ry three was originally formed in April of nineteen ninety-two. And the Roy's Restaurant started, opened first in nineteen eighty-eight. And the way I had legally structured each entity as we expanded the restaurants was I would create a separate legal entity for each restaurant. So Ry three was originally created for the first Roy's Restaurant in Waikiki, which was at a hotel that is currently the Doubletree Alana. It was in the basement. That restaurant unfortunately did not do well until we closed it several years later. But I never dissolved Ry three. So then, as Roy's continued to expand, you know, fast forward to nineteen ninety-nine, I decided that we should restructure the legal organization of the company and create a holding company called Roy's Holdings, Inc. And then all the shareholders would transfer their shares in the various other entities that owned the Roy's Restaurant. They would transfer their shares to Roy's Holdings in exchange for shares in Roy's Holdings. So it's basically just a restructuring. And that was done. Well, Ry three was just kind of sitting out there as a dormant corporation. So now we further fast forward to the current Roy's Waikiki, which is at the Waikiki Beach Walk. And I actually originally created a Ry ten or eleven or something, I lost track, and signed the lease with that entity. But then our CFO tells me, you know, because it's a new entity, our unemployment rating is going to start brand-new and so we're going to be paying a lot more unemployment taxes to the state. And we have Ry three and if we use Ry three, we can use that rating, which is lower. So it saves us some money. I said, oh, okay, so we'll use Ry three. So we react, you know, we basically took Ry three off the shelf, transferred the lease to Ry three with the landlord's consent. Then I prepared the liquor license application under Ry three, which at the time, the shareholders, you know, Roy was eighty percent shareholder. And my intent at the time was after we got the liquor commission approval, then I would transfer the Ry three shares to Roy's Holdings and, you know, off we go and then come to the commission for approval for that stuff transfer. Well, I forgot. And so since Roy's Waikiki opened, it has always been treated as, Ry three has always been treated for tax purposes, for all other purposes, as a wholly owned subsidiary of Roy's Holdings. Because in my mind, that's how we restructured everything. But I had forgotten that Ry three was actually not, you know, folded into that because it was a dormant entity at the time. So somehow or other, my assistant learned of this error, if you will, in the records of the liquor. I can't remember how she figured it out. So that's why we then submitted the application, you know, many years later to try to correct the records. So that's kind of the history there.
Very good. Thank you for being forthcoming with the commission, we appreciate it. Next time, hire a good attorney.
Drop them back here.
Motion to approve, request number two zero dash two zero six eight nine.
Second?
Moved in second, agenda item number twelve, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, so that's an application.
Yep.
Calling agenda item number twelve, application number two zero, hold on, wait a minute. Now you got me all jammed up.
We approve it.
Moved in second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number two zero dash two zero six eight nine is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you again. Calling agenda item number thirteen, request number two zero dash two zero five four six from Foodland Supermarket. Mr. Uwioka.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Picaro, Robert Uwioka on behalf of Foodland Supermarket Limited. And this is for the bar for Foodland Farms in Alamoana Center. Present to my right, Mr. Paul Yasukochi. He is the director of front-the-house operations. First name P A U L, last name Y A S U K O C H I.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you for the diagrams and the pictures. I just, you know, to warn you of your own success when it's not, there's nothing barricading. You know, you folks might have issues with people roaming with their drinks. So I would caution you to make sure patrons are aware of where these lines are.
Absolutely, just to give credit where credit is due, these are taken by Daniel Sato. So thank you so much. And what we'll do, we're going to do is put a line on these same lines. It helps us as well.
Right.
And also, we're going to have additional signage about, you know, preventing people from removing alcohol out of the area.
Yeah.
But I thank Daniel for his hard work on this.
It's going to be in the middle of your own success.
Thank you.
Where do you plan on putting the signs or posting the signs?
Posting signs, we're going to put signage saying that it's against state liquor laws to take alcoholic beverages, you know, outside the lines.
I'm sorry, not the content, but where do you plan on posting the signs?
Oh, we're going to, we're probably going to put them right on these extensions. You know, these wooden pillars, I think.
Okay.
And all the tables as well, just kind of maybe as a case table pens.
Okay, thank you.
And I know I mentioned this at the preliminary hearing, Mr. Uwioka, but, you know, patrons and customers can be confused when there's a, you're in a retail license, you got the bar is right next to where you're selling wine, that they cannot buy alcohol and then consume on the premises.
Absolutely.
So I would caution you to make that clear. So I would caution you to make that clear to your customers and patrons.
Our customers and our employees as well.
Yes.
Motion to approve, request number two zero dash two zero five four six.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirteen, request number two zero dash two zero five four six is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number fourteen, request number two zero dash two zero five six five from Kailua Racket Club, Mr. Nagel.
Good afternoon, Bruce Nagel, N A G E L.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve, request number two zero dash two zero five six five.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fourteen, request number two zero dash two zero five six five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Nagel. Calling agenda item number fifteen, request number two zero dash two zero six seven four from TMNPS Corporation, DBA Saigon Passion.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keith Kiu Chi for the applicant.
Chairman, I recuse to potential conflict, I just.
Thank you.
Commissioners, this is a request from TMNPS, whose lease expires on November thirtieth. Move it to what is the present location of the close of Ginsa nightclub. We're still in negotiations with the landlord, we don't have a lease yet, we're not submitting the application until we get a lease, but we obviously need to request a waiver first. Once we submit the application, the second step would be to delete that portion of the license held by Two and H, Inc., which will become, hopefully become, the Saigon Passion license. That's why we've got that diagram on, attached to the letter.
So the application is for the entire space, but you don't intend, you intend to later come back to reduce the license premises to just the space delineated in the diagram we have here?
No, the space, the application will be limited to the redlined space in the diagram. The larger space is still going to be under the Two and H license, so we're going to have to delete the redlined space from the Two and H license, then that will become the Saigon Passion license.
This is just a waiver for you to apply?
It's a waiver to apply, and frankly, we do not yet have an agreement with the landlord. The landlord approached us, not the other way around. We needed to get this in because Saigon Passion's lease is absolutely going to expire November thirtieth.
Is that real?
My big pardon?
Yes.
No, it's not the rail, it's the.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment, the same owner, Avalon, that bought Kenrock Building, bought the adjoining property. So this Saigon Passion, at least, that was a month longer than the other tenant, the other liquor license tenant, so.
Miss Camps, say, it's time to go.
Well, that's their development, their project, and, you know, we've been looking for a while because we've known it, so.
Commissioner?
Okay, motion to approve, request number two zero dash two zero six seven four.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen, request number two zero dash two zero six seven four is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiu Chi. Can we have Commissioner Mia Shirou back? Calling agenda item number sixteen, request number two zero dash two zero seven two six from Hyatt Corporation.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioner. Justin Baydie, Hyatt Regency Waikiki. With me is F and B Manager Zubin Batty.
Judge, please, the name for me.
That's S Z O M B A T Y.
Commissioner?
And I didn't get the words spelled.
Balaporia, B A L A P O R I A.
And your first name again?
Zubin.
Reuben.
Z U B I N.
Z U B I N, okay, gotcha. I don't hear too good, you know.
Huh?
I don't need one of those pretty soon.
Okay, and this is requesting self-service for your Regency Club at the Hyatt Regency Waikiki, correct?
That's correct. We made some amendments on the original proposal.
Right.
Why don't you walk through the changes or the clarifications?
Thank you, Commissioner.
So what we did is, first of all, first proposal had liquor, wine, beer, wine and spirits. We are going to modify to just beer and wine. We are going to also install a portion dispenser, a crew member, wine dispenser to control the amount of servings. We also will be requiring that all the guests be carded at the door to ensure that it's a proper age. There also is going to be manager presence as well. All the associates and the managers will be, have our liquor card, so they'll be fully trained by the Commission. We also wanted to note that the guest flow and volume might have been a little stated higher than last time, even though overall occupancy of the club is, you know, around two hundred fifty, the amount of alcohol consumed per hour is rather quite low. And one of the reasons why we felt, you know, it was also good to take away the spirit part was our guests really are already consuming wine here. And if you look at it over the course of the night, on average, we're pretty much, our guests are consuming about eighteen drinks per hour. We'll have three associates in a club during this time, so we feel, and hopefully the Commission feels, that that'll be a suitable staff.
Very good. So first and foremost, thank you very much for addressing the Commission's concerns. And with that being said, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
One question. Did I hear correctly, that we're going to check identification for all guests entering the club?
That's correct.
And so it's going to be a twenty-one and over club during this happy hour?
No, it'll still be available for guest families and whatnot, but most of the guests that are coming through the club are twenty-one and over.
If one of the hotel patrons or guests are twenty eligible to enter the club, that person's going to be checked for identification?
Yeah, and they won't be able to pour themselves any kind of alcohol.
And the restriction's going to be imposed by the three staff members, aren't you?
That's correct.
Pour or drink.
Correct.
Very good. Consume.
And because this is a private club, please make your staff aware of how to identify liquor investigators, so that when liquor investigators come, they have free entry and open entry into the premises.
Absolutely.
And that would include, so is there a private elevator that gain, that you can gain access to the club with only a room key?
It's not an elevator, it's a door that only opens with the room key, that's activated to Regency Club.
Is it a glass door?
Yes.
Where somebody can see?
Yes.
So if our investigators show up and present their credentials, they will be allowed to?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Is it the Hyatt Regency in Maui that has the elevator exclusive to the club?
Actually, it has changed to the Regency Club, it's now.
Pardon?
It's in a new spot in Maui Regency. I don't think it had an elevator.
Okay.
Motion to approve, request number two zero dash two zero seven two six.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, request number two zero dash two zero seven two six is approved. Can we have a?
Thank you.
Can we have a short recess, Ms. Warrington? Thank you. We are now in recess. Okay. We ready?
Yes.
Okay, we are now back on the record. Good afternoon, Ms. Warrington. Nice to see you again.
Good afternoon.
It's been a while.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners, Deputy Corporation Counsel Kaliko Warrington, handling the prosecution for today's adjudication matters.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number seventeen, Jaime Guillón. Jaime, Jaime Guillón?
So three calls were made for licensee with no response, and in this case, it is a first violation for failure to file annual employee list on time with a recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars, so we would request default answer against the licensee in that amount.
Thank you.
Can you confirm service was made on the licensee?
Correct, service was made. The notice of hearing was signed by Harumi Kamiyama, the manager, on nine seventeen nineteen, September nineteen seventeen, twenty nineteen. They did actually call and request a continuance for the previous hearing, so they were aware and got a second notice, and that was when they signed on September seventeenth, so, yeah. I did try to call, leave a message for them as well, and there was no response.
Thank you.
Motion to approve a default judgment in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number seventeen, the default judgment in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number eighteen, the surfing pig?
Good afternoon, Chairman O'Donnell and Commissioner Stan Glanther, G L A N D E R.
In this case, the charges licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City County of Honolulu, honored before July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross liquor, gross amount of liquor sold by licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, and ending June twentieth, twenty nineteen, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point fifty-four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and Hospital.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington, your recommendation?
Yes, and for the record, I would like to note the presence for matters eighteen to twenty-one of Akiko Reyes, the Liquor Commission Auditor, to address any questions. Now, in this case, the licensee's gross liquor sales report was due on July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and it was filed September tenth, twenty nineteen, making it forty-one days late. Therefore, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
And is this a first-time violation for this type of violation?
Yes.
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Why did you file late?
No excuse, other than we had a change in accounting, and that's the person that did it. As soon as the investigators came into the store, we literally filed it within hours and paid it by then.
Okay, and you folks taken any measures to prevent this from happening again?
It's in my calendar.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number nineteen, U B L L C.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner, my name is Olivia Ho.
Your last name is spilt?
H O.
Ho, okay. Thought you said Hulk.
Ms. Warrington, go ahead.
In this case, licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City County of Honolulu, honored before July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months, beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, and ending June twentieth, twenty nineteen, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point fifty-four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ms. Ho, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington?
In this case, the licensee's gross liquor sales report was due July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and it was filed September eleventh, twenty nineteen, making it forty-two days late. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Ho, any comment?
I don't know, just, yeah, I didn't know that actually the license is in safekeeping here, and the business is actually closed July thirty, December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. I just didn't know, so I filed a zero gross sales, yeah.
But you're no longer in business?
No.
And you said you closed?
The last day of business, December thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Okay, and are you going to be making efforts to transfer or sell the license or cancel it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just didn't take the proper step to close it.
You can come in during regular business hours and they can help you with that.
Has the license been renewed this year, or is it still in safekeeping?
It's not renewed.
It's not renewed anymore?
Motion to file a letter of reprimand. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty, Club Us. Just not sure.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioner Robin Melcher, on behalf of the landlord, Peter Cho. We waive public reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest with explanation.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Before we proceed, Ms. Melcher, you represent the landlord?
Correct, so.
Not the licensee?
Club Us, was the tenant, and they vacated the property, and we could not locate them to file the gross sales report, so the landlord stepped in to file the gross sales report.
Can we have a point of order?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The landlord has a power of attorney for the tenant, because we are in the process of transferring the license, so he signed as power of attorney on behalf of Club Us to accept the.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Ms. Warrington?
In this case, the liquor's gross liquor sales report was due on July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and it was filed on September sixteenth, twenty nineteen, making it forty-seven days late. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of seven hundred dollars.
Ms. Melcher?
Yes, so as I stated, that we could not, Mr. Cho tried to find the tenant to file the gross sales report, he even contacted her accountant, and he said she never turned in any records, so he couldn't file the report. So we helped, we assisted, we asked the Commission to help us and try and file the report, which they did, Akiko did actually help us generate the form, and once we were able to generate the gross sales report, then we were able to file the gross sales report. And therefore, you know, Mr. Cho, even though that's not his sales, he has agreed to accept responsibility for it, but we are requesting that the Commission can either give him a letter of reprimand or to reduce the fine, because it's not really his sales, but again, he's accepted responsibility on behalf of the former tenant.
So let me ask a question. So did your tenant stick you with non-payment? Considerable amount of money?
Yes.
Thank you, I thought so.
And how, how recently has the, has the business been closed, you know?
So technically, as of February?
Yes, that February fourth.
Right, but from February to about June, she was trying to work with. Right. But, um, from February to about June, she was trying to work with Mr. Cho to either come back in or get someone else. And then after that, he could no longer find her.
What's the status of the lease? Has he taken possession through...
Yes, he has taken possession, and we actually applied for a transfer of the lease.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, motion to issue a letter of reprimand. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Yum Cha Hawaii LLC.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Samuels, S-A-M-U-E-L-S.
Ms. Warrington?
Case licensee failed to file with the liquor commission of the sitting county of Honolulu on or before July thirty first, twenty nineteen. A report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, twenty eighteen, and ending June twentieth, twenty nineteen in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point fifty-four C of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Samuels, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-one, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington?
In this case, the licensee's gross liquor sales report was due June, sorry, July thirty first, twenty nineteen, and it was filed on September twenty seventh, twenty nineteen, making it fifty-eight days late. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of $700.
Mr. Samuels, what happened?
Um, the, the full disclosure, it's, it's my wife's restaurant, not my husband's. Lisa told me that, uh, she's forgotten. She just got overwhelmed on the restaurant. It, it wasn't, uh, in-- intended.
This is a first-time violation. How long has your wife been in business?
Uh, she officially opened, uh, January seventh, two thousand and, I believe it was seventeen. So, she, she's pretty new. This is her first business she's ever operated. So, I've been, I, I've had my own business for twenty-something years. And I try to offer my advice sometimes. So, maybe she doesn't take it. So, um, again, it, it, this, this wasn't... It, it just happened. And, um, I have worked with her to get everything on track, so it won't happen again. Yeah. Uh, I would ask, uh, I heard something about a reprimand. Is that a... I couldn't hear too well back there, but...
No, there'll be no letter of...
Anything less than that.
Your, your wife will pay.
Well, actually, it's gonna be me.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of $700. Second.
Moved, moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-one, the recommended fine of $700 is approved.
Thank you for coming.
Remember, Mr. Samuels, happy wife makes happy life. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Chong's Market.
Hello, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Daniel Kim, and to my right is my dad, Tony Kim. I'm just here to kinda speak for him.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
In this case, on or about February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor and allowed consumption of intoxicating or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam Salmos at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mr. Kim, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-two, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington?
In this case, um, this was part of a alcohol compliance enforcement project. HPD Officer Eric Leong entered the premises and the decoy Liam Salmos entered after. The decoy purchased the can labeled as Bud Light, and the employee, Kim Narda, Nara, sold the liquor. She did not ask for identification, did not ask if the minor was twenty-one years old, did not ask his age, and did not ask his birthday. The decoy was nineteen at the time and did have a vertical ID which stated age twenty-one in two thousand and twenty. HPD Officer Leong submitted a can of Bud Light into evidence. And this is a first violation for sale to liquor to a minor with a recommended fine of $1,000.
Mr. Kim, this is sale to a minor. Your cashier did not ask for identification, so explanation, please.
So, after that, my mom did take into account that, um, she needs the ID from now on. And even if, like, people that come to our store are regulars, like, we still ID them. And even if she sees a new face, we'll still ID them. And if they're not over twenty-one, she won't sell alcohol or, like, tobacco to them.
And she's...
She's been keeping up.
And she's capable of making, of identifying when they're under twenty-one?
Yes. Uh, she has a little, like, date thing of the year. And so, she keeps that right in front of the cashier, and she checks it at the time.
Okay. Uh, this is part of our alcohol compliance check campaign. So, you can be, be prepared for these checks. And also, this is to, um, see how you folks are doing. So, we, we always wonder if you're, if you fail this test, how many other minors you've sold to. So, please be aware of that. We don't wanna see you again for this type of violation especially.
Yes.
Can you explain that to your father, please? Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-two, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Fresh Cats LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Vice Commissioners.
Your name, please?
Orenol Henriquez, H-E-N-R-I-Q-U-E-S.
In this case, on or about February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, in the sitting county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Howard Hui at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mr. Henriquez, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-three, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington?
This was also a part of the alcohol compliance enforcement project. HPD Officer Eric Ho Kama entered the premises and decoy Howard Hui entered after. The decoy purchased the can labeled as Bud Light, and then the employee Sierra Fique sold the liquor. She did not ask for ident-- oh, sorry. She did ask for identification, did not ask if the minor was twenty, twenty-one years old, did not ask his age, and did not ask his birthday. The decoy was twenty at the time and did have a vertical ID which listed his twenty-first birthday. Uh, this is a first violation for sale liquor to a minor with a recommended fine of $1,000.
Mr. Henriquez, any explanation?
I don't know. I, I do everything I can to train the kids, train the workers. We have those stuff. We put the IDs in it. I don't know. This slipped, lady, the girl just slipped. A real busy location, no excuses, but yeah, I don't know. I try and force it, these guys, and it's hard to find good workers.
Um, this is a vertical ID, so have they been trained to recognize what a vertical ID means?
Yes.
I'm very familiar with this location. It's in my neighborhood, so we don't wanna see you here again.
I do not wanna come back here.
Please stress to them the importance of making sure they're not selling to minors.
Well, yes. We're building a new location toward that old, uh, Chevron gas station, huh? Three-story building.
Oh, so you're doing that work over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's in my neighborhood, too.
You better come support. I need the money. Right, it's too expensive.
Mr. Henriquez, what happened to Sierra?
Uh, she's not, no longer there anymore.
Because of this?
Yes.
Okay. That's shared with your other employees that...
Yes, the next, it seemed if I found out, she was gone.
And, um, my neighbor too, um, may I suggest that you do spot checks on your employees? Because I think I recall having one of these a couple of years ago. And I think I heard you, if I recall correctly, that the challenge was the employees and not focusing. Perhaps you could do spot checks, have your management team do that.
For sure, for sure.
Because if you please yourself, um, we don't need to do that.
No, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms.
Friends and family's gonna cost you.
I know. Twenty-five, I can hire everybody.
Everybody knows everybody, darling. You know that.
All right. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-three, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you for coming.
Pokie person's enough.
Calling agenda item number twenty-four, Nimetz Local Stop and Deli.
Kumok, K-U-M-O-K-C-H-A-N-G.
I'm sorry?
K-U-M-O-K-C-H-A-N-G.
Kumok Chang.
Ms. Warrington?
On or about February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, in the sitting county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam Salmos at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Ms. Chang, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, the no contest plea is accepted. Point of order, please. Do you totally understand what we're saying and what's going on?
Little bit.
Little bit. Would you like to, would you like to have an interpreter? No? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Warrington?
This was also part of the alcohol compliance enforcement project. HPD Officer Eric Leong entered the premises and the decoy Liam Salmos entered after. The decoy purchased the can labeled as Bud Light, and the employee sold, uh, sold it to the decoy. The clerk did not ask for the identifi-- sorry, did ask for identification, but did not ask if the minor was twenty-one years old. The employee did state, oh, California, August twenty-fourth, but then didn't follow up any further. The decoy was nineteen at the time and did have a vertical ID which clearly listed age twenty-one in two thousand and twenty. Officer Leong questioned the clerk, and the clerk said, no, no ID, said nineteen eighty-nine. And officer informed her that it actually said nineteen ninety-nine, which he clearly stated his, his birthday. So, this is a second violation for the sale of liquor to a minor. There was a previous violation that occurred on April twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen, where the licensee was previously fined $1,000. Therefore, we recommend a fine of $2,000 in this case.
Ms. Chang, second time?
Yes.
Do you understand what happened?
February twenty-sixth was ours, uh, hap-- next day I have to check the doctor, so I have to take something, diarist. I have to go on. My friend helped me that day. So, she didn't check the ID very well, so it was my fault. I wasn't there, so...
Okay, this is your second violation for selling to a minor?
Yes.
You understand that we can suspend or revoke your license? We can cancel your license for these types of violations?
This time?
No, well, we, we can, so...
I don't want to lose the license.
I, I know, so make sure this doesn't happen. It's your responsibility.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $2,000. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, the recommended fine of $2,000 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Tony's Liquor and Deli.
If I may, Commissioners, I did get a request from the licensee today to continue to do a family, um, thing that came up. Therefore, we have no objection to that and would request that it be continued to the next available date.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-five, to the next available date. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-five is continued to the next available date. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Time Supermarket. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Gary Shalander. I'm the district manager of the Time Supermarket. The last name is spelled S-H-A-L-A-N-D-E-R. And this is a store director at that location.
Um, last name is Nakamura, N-A-K-A-M-U-R-A. First name, Kimberly.
In this case, on or about February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor to a minor, specifically Howard Hui at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
How would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington?
This was also part of the alcohol compliance enforcement project. The HPD Officer Eric Ho Kama entered the premises and the decoy Howard Hui entered after. The decoy purchased the can labeled as Bud Light, and the employee clerk then sold the liquor to the decoy. The clerk did ask for identification, but did not ask if the minor was twenty-one years old, did not ask his age, did not ask his birthday. The decoy was twenty at the time and did have a vertical ID which listed his twenty-first birthday. This is a first violation for sale of liquor to a minor with a recommended fine of $1,000.
Mr. Shalander?
Yes.
This is also in my neighborhood. So, what happened?
Um, on the damn question, uh, the cashier, she asked for ID. She actually physically took the ID in her hand. She punched the ID in. Uh, our register system, I can get back to that later. The register system comes up with a screen that restricts, it says restricted sale. She must have just panicked, and she, she pressed the button to can override it. Our new, our new POS net doesn't allow that. But, and in the question, she did the, the steps, but the, when it came down to it, when she punched the ID, it did say, uh, this person's still too young, and, uh, she, she bypassed it.
So, you have a new POS system that, what, what happens if that screen comes up now?
Yeah, so, uh, the new system, um, the last time I was here, we, we talked about getting the new system. We hadn't gotten it by the time this, but now the new system's in there. So, now when you punch it in, it'll still come up, but the cashiers don't have the capability to override it. That brings a manager over, and manager would have to scan the badge. And then, and they're recorded, and they're the ones that scanned it. There's, they, they interact and say, what, what's, what's the issue? Because at that point, you can, even if she hadn't asked for all those things, you can say, I wanna bypass it, but that's gonna call a manager over in question. For older, older customers who, who don't wanna give their birthday or something, you still, they cannot override it. The only, the only way they could override it is to punch in, let's say, a dummy date. But we have a daily report that's sent out to our, to myself, our president, and, uh, our, our friend and supervisor that, that lists who the cashier was if they have consistently used that date before.
And what happened with this employee?
Uh, she doesn't, no longer works with us. It, it wasn't because of this. In our syst-- in our, our company, we, she would never have been allowed to sell, to use a register anymore. She would have been put into position that she, where she wouldn't have had the capability to sell alcohol. She, but she decided to leave. So, it wasn't, we don't terminate upon that, but we, we make it such that they cannot use the systems anymore.
Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000. Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Dean and De Moka.
Commissioners, in this case, licensee's attorney now, Nicole, did request a continuance to November twenty-first, twenty nineteen. We have no objection, and therefore, request that this matter be continued to November twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-seven, to November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seven is continued to November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Warrington? You're invited back next week. You're invited back next week. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight, Administrative Matters. Um, I know we have one, but, uh, can I clarify one thing, and apologize to the commission? So on, um, a violation for a, um, service to the minor, um, do we still have, uh, on the books, uh, the policy that if a, a licensee goes in and buys a new POS system or electronic devices to help, um, comply with our rules, that he can get a credit for the amount that he?
Uh, we've done that in the past.
I, I know we officially had it, but I want, I didn't, you know, and I apologize to not sharing that with you guys, but, you know, I mean, like, times, it's no big thing for them.
Right.
But, I mean, for the small businesses, we did, uh, we had the ability to apply the penalty, provided, provided they would bring proper receipts and everything.
Yes, and we call us to it several times.
We have allowed that, okay, just, just wanted to clarify that.
Is that an actual policy, Chair, or was it a practice of the commission?
Um, so I think we, I.
I think it was a, I think, I think it was a practice, but, you know, I'm, you know, you gotta be a check with Anna, because this probably started way before I was.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, when Anna comes back, I don't know if we had anything written on that. I mean, there's nothing, there's, I don't believe there's anything in the rules.
No, no, nothing in the rules, but, and I, I'm not aware of any of the policy, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
Yeah, no, yeah.
And I believe that licensees have passed, in the past, and we've accommodated.
Yeah.
Um, and usually only for first time violation.
Yeah, right, correct, most definitely, most definitely.
But again, the penalty is at your discretion, so that's something that you guys would have to consider.
All right, very good. Okay, then, with that being said, meeting adjourned.